You want to get started? Susan?
Sure.
All right, you're recording already. All right. I'd like to call to order the Massonia Planning Commission meeting for April 19th, 2021. Can we do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Sheavone?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
And Mr. Valadis Apson.
All right, first item's approval of some minutes. We've got the March 15th public hearing minutes first. Anybody have any comments or corrections? It sound like it. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll second it.
No motion.
Mr. Sheavone did.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, second is the March 15th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Any comments or corrections to that? You're none. Someone want to make a motion for that one?
Somebody make a motion.
All right. Mr. Shawn.
I'll second it.
All right, Jason. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Into the agenda. First item. I'm gonna probably mess it up again. Mr. Barker, is that what you said? The first time, okay, thank you. Proposing conditional zoning certificate and oversized detached garage at 9692 North Bedford. If you want to just give us a real quick rundown, I actually, I'll, I'll put the plans and everything up on the screen. This is yours. Please, so just give us a brief overview of your project here.
Yeah, so you see, the way this paper is looking, towards the north, I have in print these the new versus the old garage. The old garage currently, the way it's configured, it can't hold a car between my fiancee and myself. We have four cars here and the ranch style house has one attached garage for one car. So the new garage I'm proposing, the 40 by 26, it's gonna have, be able to fit three cars plus a little bit of storage. And I'm going with the area, which is considered the side yard based on there's already paved driveway over there. So it's kind of real, really limit the amount of, you know, paving or asphalt I have to put down by utilizing that side drive. And there's gonna come in from the north base to there. But other than that, I think most of the points kind of sketched out in there. Is anybody need any clarification on something that doesn't make sense?
Um, I guess, yeah, unless we have some questions, maybe I'll let Mr. France go through his, his comments.
Chairman, did you want me to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead and go through.
So I have, I have two, two reports. My primary report and then an addendum to that. My first report dated April 10th. The addendum report dated April 17th. So the applicant's proposal is for a 40 by 26 garage. You see it stated, you could see on the, the plan in front of you about 1,040 square feet. There is an existing garage on the property. It's about 696 square feet. It's 29 by 24. It's in the rear yard of the property. And to my knowledge, based on the photos, there is a asphalt driveway extension off of the main driveway that leads back to, all the way back to that existing garage. And that garage also has a lean two on it. So the total square footage between the existing garage and what's proposed with the lean two would be over, a little over 2,000 square feet. Without the lean two, it's about a little over 1,700 square feet. So I've reviewed the code based on the request and the subject property is zoned R1 residential, subject to section 116302, specifically 116302H and I. I being the regulation that regu, that speaks to provisions for large lots. And a large lot is defined as a lot that's greater than one acre. So that does allow for a larger detached accessory building on the property. But I'll go through the, so there, that existing garage that's on the subject property is larger than 288 square feet and under 116302H3. It states that a maximum one assess, one other accessory building with a maximum area not to exceed 288 square feet shall be permitted on a lot. And so then it goes on with some other language that if you could have more than two, if you don't exceed 288. But that second accessory structure is limited to 288 square feet. As we know, the existing structure is a little under 700 square feet without the lean two. So the issue at hand would be if this were, this detached garage would be to approved, it would effectively create a non-conformity to the code with the existing garage. We'll come back to that in just a minute. I reviewed the structure for the height, height requirement and 116302H6 states that the maximum height cannot exceed 15 feet or the height of the main building, whichever less. The applicant's proposal states that the highest point structure will be 15 feet. So just my comment to that is that the commission, the applicant should confirm that the structure does not exceed the height of the main house or 15 feet. So just confirmation for the record. And then we get into the issue of the location of the proposed garage. As you can see on the applicant's site plan, it's located in front of the existing garage and, and labeled new on there and provides a 30-foot side yard setback and that garage is substantially located in the side yard setback. The code under 116302, 116302. Let me get the I, as in indigo, states that when a structure, an oversized structure is in the front or side yard, the lot has to be three acres in area and the setback to the side lot line has to be 50 feet. So the, the conflict here is that the proposal is only 30 feet for the setback and the lot is only 1.54 acres in area. So there's two issues as it relates to that. Now, the applicant did provide, and let's, let's say, an email to the commission secretary stating that they would remove the existing detached garage within one year of starting the, the new one, if that new garage were to be approved. And so what my comment to that was, you know, technically the planning commission can't grant that type of approval without some guarantee. So I state if the applicant agrees to execute a development agreement with the city, basically contractually obligates him to remove the second structure within a defined period. My opinion, a year seems long, but that's something that the commission can work with the applicant. And so if they enter into this development agreement and then post either a bond or some sort of financial guarantee that would guarantee that essentially that the approval of the commission is executed within that defined time period, I think that's acceptable. But it doesn't, it doesn't avoid the remaining issue, which is the location of the structure in the side yard and the, the lot area needed to locate it in the side yard in the provided setback. Now, if the applicant were to demo that garage on the front end and move the structure back to behind the rear face of the building, then that would be acceptable. The one, the 1.5 acres is acceptable, the 30-foot side yard is acceptable, but it can't be located in that side yard. Otherwise, the larger lot and larger setback would, would sort of be required. And I can answer any questions that the commission has. The only other outstanding item was I thought that given the size of the structure, some sort of grading plan would be needed and that could be worked through the, the engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. So I guess, I guess, Mr. July, do you have any, any comments?
Thank you, Chairman. Not really on this particular one. The only thing that I would mention to the commission is that it appears that there's a large creek immediately north of the location of this oversized garage. So I would expect, I guess, or maybe the planning commission could make it a part of the motion that the gutters and downspouts would be directed into the creek. That would be all, Chairman.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Bell, you have anything?
No comments, sir.
All right. Mr. Rodick, do you have any?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, Mr. Barker has, has applied for the, the variances that Brian had spoke of earlier. And those cases will be heard this coming Wednesday at the zoning board of appeals meeting. And the, and I think the, as far as the one year goes, I know that zoning inspector Chris Hall had discussions with, with Mr. Barker regarding that. And, and he had consulted with me as well, thinking that, that the residential code of Ohio, which is a prevailing building code, does allow for a permit of up to one year. And figuring that the permit is going to be twofold, there'll be a demolition permit and a building permit, we thought that a one-year timeframe would be, would be appropriate. I do like Mr. Franz's suggestion of a development agreement or a bond. And should, should this move forward, we'll, we'll certainly follow through with that. And that's all I have.
If you could hear that, Commissioner, do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Westbrook, I ask a question.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if you, why you need a bond. Why do you need, in other words, a, a bail suit or a, or a, or a, anyway, I don't know why you need.
We're getting some, some feedback from somebody or, I guess, if you're not one of the ones speaking on the subject, maybe see if you can mute and see if that helps. Sounds like, sounds like we got it. Okay, so your question was why, why the bond?
And the development agreement.
Yeah, it's, well, development agreement and the bond, I think is to guarantee that, that, you know, if he, if he says he's gonna take it down, that it actually happens. And the city actually has some power to have him do that.
Do you mean that, is that, does it mean that development agreement is unenforceable without a bond? You can't enforce agreements?
Mr. Chairman, I could.
Please do.
Yeah, so it, it doesn't mean that the development agreement's unenforceable, but it does mean you have to go to court to enforce the development agreement as opposed to, and, and I'm not a big fan of bonds, to be honest with you. I'd rather see a letter or a credit, but a bond is easier for a residential applicant. But it, so it means that you wouldn't have to worry about attempting to enforce the development agreement. The development agreement will set forth the terms and conditions and link that to a financial guarantee that says if applicant defaults, development agreement kicks in, development agreement states that city can exercise the, whatever form the financial guarantee is to go and complete the work and backcharge that financial guarantee. So I do think you need both of those mechanisms as opposed to just a development agreement.
Well, thank you. That's good.
All right. Any other members have comments or questions? No. No. All right.
Did we get the confirmation on the height of the building? Cause the, the specifications submitted with, with the application was nine feet in height. It seems, based on the drawings, it seems like it's a little low.
It's nine-foot walls.
That's what I was thinking. So what's the, do we know the total height with the peak of the roof?
Yeah, it should be listed on there in one of the Menards pages at 15 feet.
I didn't know Menards did this.
And can we confirm that that's no taller than your house, Mr. Barker? Does that sound right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay. So I guess if, if nobody has any, you know, I don't have any real issue with this. I, I like Mr. Francis's suggestions. It does have to get a variance, you know, unless you're, unless you're willing to push it back, which I'm guessing the fact that you filed the, the variance request, that that's not something you want to do.
Right, yeah, we're shooting for that side yard, that little overlap there.
Okay. You know, I'd be okay with making this contingent on the BZA approval, if you guys are okay. And as well stating that the, the agreement, including a bond with a one-year timeline and also July's request of gutters and downspouts being directed towards the creek. Does anybody else have any thoughts?
No, you should make a motion then, Kevin, I think.
I like.
That sounded like a good motion to me.
And just, Mr. France, do we need to, is there two approvals here?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. You would need to have a separate approval for a conditional zoning certificate for the oversized garage. I would approve that, subject to the conditions you just stated, and then just reaffirm on the approval for the, the oversized garage that it's linked together.
Okay.
I think you have them on your, I think they're on the agenda as to.
Yes, that's, I was looking, I pulled back, went back to that to make sure. All right, I'll make a first motion. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was, you know, in theory, in theory, you really only need to approve the conditional zoning certificate and add those stipulations, which effectively approves the request. I'm comfortable if you do it that way.
Okay.
Of the agenda.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it that way. I'll make a motion to approve the conditional zoning certificate for 8159 South Bedford Road, contingent on several things. One being approval of the BZA, from the BZA for a side yard location of the building. Two, that there's the development agreement between the city and the owner to include bond with a one-year timeline. And third, that the gutters and downspouts are directed towards the creek.
I think, I think I heard you say 9692 North Bedford Road, right?
Did I read the wrong one?
You may have.
I may have. 9692 North Bedford Road. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Shawn. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I think I heard you say a financial guarantee, just leaving that a little open-ended because it might be easier for the applicant to do a different type of financial guarantee?
Yes, that sounds correct. I think you.
And that, and, yeah, and that, and that can be worked out. I'm assuming Mr. Goodetti will put together a brief shell of an agreement for the applicant to look over. This is pretty straightforward and the applicant can determine what the most effective financial guarantee is. It may be easier for him to do a different one.
Okay. Thank you for the suggestion. All right. If there's no other discussion, Susan, you want to do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Sheavone?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Valadis Apson.
All right. Well, good luck at BZA.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hopefully you'll be building soon.
All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, the second item on the agenda is 8159 South Bedford Road. Mr. Marzen?
Yes.
Is proposing something similar. We, I'll pull up your application. Would you like to give us just a brief overview, similar to the last one, just to kind of let us know what you're doing?
Um, so about two and a half, you guys can hear me okay?
Yep, it sounds good.
So about two years ago, I applied for the same build, except it was a 24 by 40, to be placed behind the, the current house, 10-foot side yard setback and way far away from the rear setback. So at this, at that time, I got denied pending a, pending building in the side yard, I guess. And so after a ton of research, I decided to go ahead and reapply and change the dimensions a little bit, went a little bit shorter because of the lumber prices, but proposing a 24 by 36 garage with, with 12-foot walls. And currently, the driveway is in place for that. It's 40 feet from the house, back of the house. And I guess that's about it. If you guys need any, any other information, feel free to ask.
Okay. Mr. France, you want to go over your comments on this one?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So my report dated April 10th, and as the applicant stated, seeking an oversized garage about 864 square feet. My first comment in the background information has already been researched and information provided by the board secretary. She did let me know that a permit was pulled for that existing garage on the property and it's less than 200 square feet. So that, that's good. And so that, that does not then bring in that existing code regulation. So really, there's only two other minor issues. One, the grading and drainage. Let the city engineer speak to that, but, you know, 10 feet from the property line, which want to be careful about drainage onto that adjoining property. And then the second thing is the height of the structure does show 17 feet, six inches, previously 12 feet. That height doesn't comply with the specified ordinances 1130, 11330214 for the definition of a building height. And of course, the height has to be 15 feet or the height of the main structure or less. So I think the main structure is two-story, so it could go up to 15 feet. And so that 17 feet, six inches is, is an issue within the code. So the only way to avoid that would be a variance from the board of zoning appeals.
And, and any thoughts on that? On, on the height? Mr. Marzen?
Um, yeah, so in, in, in the definitions of the height of a building, it talks, and I might be confused, oh, nice ram. So I might be confused because this is all new to me. But it states that a height of a building is the vertical distance to the highest point of the coping on a flat roof, but in a pitched roof, it is the mean height between the eaves and the ridge. So basically, you take that, the vertical height from the ground to the eve and then the ground to the ridge, you subtract the height of the ridge or the eve from the ridge and then divide that by two and then add that to the height of the wall. And that is the height, overall height of the building. And I get 14 foot, nine inches. So unless I'm inaccurate in my definition on the Massonia website, I would be underneath that 15 foot.
Mr. France, do you have any experience with that? This slightly rings a bell to me, but I, because I thought it came up somewhere else along the line, but.
Yeah, so, you know, the, I'm just going on the, what's in the print that 17 feet, six inches. I would leave that up to Mr. Rodick to determine if, by definition, that's why I referenced 11330214. By definition, if the height does comply, then, then it's acceptable. We know that the zoning code limits it to 15 feet and we define building height. If that definition of building height allows it up to 17 feet, six inches, because it only goes to the midpoint of the eaves or whatever, how that definition works, then it would be acceptable.
Okay. Mr. Rodick, do you have any thoughts on that or you need to dig into that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I was, did you have any thoughts on that height or is that something you'd probably just need to look into? If you heard what we were talking about with the.
Yes, yeah, that's something that I'd, I'd want to follow up on. I've got my code book here, but, but there definitely is a definition for that. And if it, if it does comply, then variance wouldn't be necessary.
Okay, okay. All right. Mr. July, do you have any, any comments?
Thanks, Chairman. Just one is Brian France had started to indicate, you know, topography and drainage would be a question. And I guess my question would be, how would the gutters and downspouts be handled or directed at this location? It's a, seems to be an area of very flat topography and we certainly all need to be cautious not to adversely affect any neighboring properties with additional drainage.
Mr. Marzen, have you thought at all about, about drainage coming off of this? This is a big building.
I, I did actually. When I did the 5,000 square foot driveway, we put in drainage on the north side of the driveway that ended, that ends at the far north, would that be northeast side of the driveway? So we are going, we're just gonna tie into that and that leads out to the ditch. When we did the driveway, the garage, the north side of the garage had two gutter downspouts that were not connected to anything and they just went out onto the, onto the dirt and lawn there. And when we installed the driveway, we tied those into that same pipe. So the pipe was designed to handle the, the extra load of the garage too. So it's a four-inch pipe that also does some, some yard drainage also, so.
Okay, yeah, I guess I would just ask that that be indicated on the drawings, please, all of what was just described.
I will do that.
Yeah, that, that would help myself and the building department to understand and to be able to review and permit as, as needed, so.
Okay. All right. Mr. Bell? Any, any thoughts?
No issues on this one, sir.
Okay, great. Mr. Rodick, any, any additional stuff beyond that height?
Uh, yes, you know, the, it looks like the wall height is 12-foot and the, the height to the ridge is 17 feet, six inches. And according to the code, the, the height of a building on a, on a pitched roof would be the height between the eaves and the ridge. So I, I think that that, I just did a quick calculation and it would appear that, that he would fall right, right into the spot where 17, six would, would be where he would max out on the, on the ridge. So the mean height would be the average between the ridge and the eve, which would end up being 15 feet.
Okay. Okay. Commission, do you guys, anyone else have any questions or comments on this?
No.
Okay. So, so Mr. France, I think going back to your, to your review, so this, if, as long as the height's okay, which I think, you know, Mr. Rodick feels that it is, this can be approved as it is. Is that right?
I'd approve it, subject to final confirmation by the engineer.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I'll make a motion. Back, make sure I get this one right too. Because this is condition, I could just, should I just do this through the conditional zoning certificate as well?
I, I think that's acceptable, yes.
Okay. Okay. Uh, make a motion to approve the conditional zoning certificate for eighty-one fifty-nine South Bedford Road, uh, contingent on, uh, final review by the engineer. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All right, Susan, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Valadis.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Marzen. Uh, good luck with your really, just, just curious, what do you think, uh, lumber prices, what do you think that's doing to you?
Um, when I originally quoted out the twenty-four by forty, uh, by twelve-foot ceiling that I proposed, um, back in two thousand eighteen, I was at twenty-eight thousand, and now I'm at thirty-six thousand.
With a smaller building.
With a four-foot smaller building, um, and all the same, uh, yeah, everything's the same.
Wow.
So I guess I'm kind of curious, um, just for the record, um, when I originally, proposed the building, it was in the same location, and it was denied because it was in the side yard. So, I mean, I would have been, I would have done this two years ago if it would have got approved back then. I was just wondering if anybody had any comments on that.
I don't. There might be something, you might be able to follow the building department if you're curious, I'm not sure. I don't think, I think it got probably denied before it got to us, because I don't remember seeing this one, or you didn't come to the actual planning commission, did you?
I, I did actually, yeah.
Okay.
It was denied because it was, um, not behind the shadow of the house, and it was, um, seven feet, um, closer to the property line than the house. Was.
I'm not sure, we'd have to probably look back at, at the minutes to see if there was a, a different mindset or something has changed, because there was, there was a change to, I think, sizes of, of, uh, the buildings available. I don't know if there was something else in the, the code change that, that recently happened.
Okay. I, that's fine. If there was a, it was, if there was, uh, something in the code that changed, then, then I'm grateful for that, and I appreciate you guys' time, for sure.
All right, uh, if, if you wanted any more follow, I'd check in with the building department and, and, and see. Sorry, I can't answer your question here, uh, off the, on the fly.
That's fine.
All right.
Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is, uh, WD Partners proposing alter, alterations to the existing wall signage at Walmart. Is there someone here representing this project? All right, Mr..
Dariano.
All right, uh, why don't you give us a overview, and I can flip through your plans if you.
Yeah, I, I'm happy. Um, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's enjoying this beautiful weather, uh, until we get the snow here in a couple of days, so. E A, Ohio, I guess. For this project, Walmart is looking at rebranding their stores nationwide, so we're pretty much revamping the signage, giving this extra, a little bit of a facelift. Um, like I said, nationwide, right now, we're proposing to reduce size, reduce total square footage signage from seven hundred twelve square feet to six hundred fifty square feet. Even though we are reducing the square footage signs, we're increasing the number. However, of the new signs, five are the directional stall signs for the automotive area, um, which is only about twenty-two square feet. So it's kind of, we're ultimately going to be reducing the total number of signage, and really it's going to be a much smaller footprint on the building. Um, the big difference to the front facade is we're changing out the grocery and pharmacy to a new grocery and pharmacy, um, more or less the same size. A new home and living to, for a new home and living, about the same size. Um, and the big difference is really, we're reducing the main sign size on the rear of the building, um, and that's going down by about sixty percent. The store is getting, all the painting is touched up and more, more or less matching existing painting of the building. Um, nothing major there, no architectural features being altered, and that's, that's the whole scope of the building right now, there for exterior scope.
Was, was there something changing on the monument sign?
Uh, the monument sign is being re-faced. We're not changing the size, it'll just look a little bit more updated. If you, uh, the panel or the inset there does show what it's going to look like, and there shouldn't be any real difference, um, it's just the face change, the mon, existing monument sign.
Okay, so you're not, because everything on there is red, you're not throwing in a blue extra, something like that?
No, typically, if we're doing that, we would modify the inset image there to show kind of what we're proposing.
Okay, all right. That sounds good. Um, Mr. France, do you want to go over your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook's. Um, yeah, so my, my report is dated April tenth, uh, and effectively, uh, the applicant sort of quickly ran through, there's no, um, concern with the area regarding on the signage of what's being proposed. I agree with the figures, um, the proposal will reduce it to a little over six hundred fifty square feet. There's, um, nine hundred and fifty-six allowed. There's minimal changes otherwise. The most significant, I guess, change on the rear of the, the elevation is the, the existing Walmart and Spark logo is, um, downsized considerably. The bays on the rear will have some instructional signs, numbers on the back of them. Instructional signs by code eleven seventy-nine oh two B nine do not, um, require approval. And if they're for the purposes of, um, just providing, um, instruction to users on the property, which I believe that would be. And the, uh, auto center is going to be re-termed automotive, and the words I circled there on the front, um, lube, tire, those are going to be replaced, it looks like, with, um, with numbers, and so there is no concern about the signage swap-out, but I did note that the, um, it's the exterior elevation, um, proposal does indicate a new pickup door being added to the front building, and I took some great artwork, and I, I showed that in my, in my picture, I drew it in for you.
That is nice.
Yes, I, I thought you'd enjoy that, uh.
I need a better carpenter, I think.
Yeah, that, that right there, that's a graduate degree at its, at its best, so. So there is this door there, and I just thought that the commission should talk through that, I don't necessarily have a term with it, but who, what, where, when, and why details about that door, I think are important, so I'd recommend approval, subject to that discussion and approval of the, um, what it looks like on the building.
I, I believe the pickup door was part of a different proposal with their, they dedicated some parking spots out front, does that sound right, Mr. Dariano?
Yes, Walmart's implementing their pickup, um, due to COVID, Walmart and many other retailers have been paying, have a big, very large sweeping change, and they're expanding all the pickup options. That'll be a dedicated door for, um, employee use only to bring out goods to the customers.
It's been a little while, but I think it, I think it did come to us, it's just, it's been a little while since, I don't, I don't know if it's even been put in yet or not, door or not, I'm not sure. But I, but I do believe it was part of something else. Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I believe that door exists.
Okay, okay.
I believe that's already done.
I, I, I think you're right, because it has been quite a while since they, they came, it was like early pandemic, uh, meeting somewhere up there.
Right.
All right, uh, so Mr. France's comments are pretty clear, um, I doubt, uh, Mr. Giladi has any comments. Mr. Bell, do you have any thoughts, anything?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rodeck?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, Commission members, do you guys have any questions?
No.
No.
Sir, Mr. Westbrook's, for, for the, for the pickup stuff, will there be additional signs added to that that are not on this, that are part of the other approval?
I think it was all parking lot signs, if I remember right.
Okay.
Because you're not, I think they're not, you, you know, the customers aren't using that door, I think that's like an employee door, if I'm remembering correctly, but there are dedicated spots, I think at one point, they changed the color, they were going to paint them blue, and maybe they did something different. I, I think they came back, or they made a change, but yeah, I think it's just an employee exit, just to bring cartloads of stuff out to people's cars.
Cool. Nothing else, thanks.
All right. If you guys are okay with this, uh, someone wants to make a motion, since I made the last two.
I approve that we approved the, uh, application, uh, as submitted, and, uh,
All right. The motions are second.
I'll second it.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, uh, Susan, you want to do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Valadis.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Second, getting stuff in order here. Next, uh, applicant is, is it pronounced Laamore Nail Care? Is that correct? There's someone here for that one?
Yes.
All right, is that, is that pronounced, am I close?
Yeah, close enough.
Why, why don't you go ahead and give us, I know we've got, we've got actually a, a plan, and then a revised plan, I think I've got them both here. I think it was just that. Just want to just let us know what you're doing, and we'll, we'll.
All right, well, I'll kind of give a history on it. Uh, you guys approved this, uh, sign, uh, back a few months ago, uh, and we had, they, they added on to their frontage, uh, took on another unit, their frontage got bigger, uh, and the owner was never been happy with the signage, because he says it's not readable from, you know, uh, the street out there, so he decided that he would put the money into a new sign, uh, matching the existing sign, um, and he would take that, you know, the old sign down, patch the holes, and then he's going to use that sign hopefully for another location, but he wanted to go with, um, a sign with a little bit lighter blue. He said that the blue is too dark, and the light doesn't transmute through to it, through it that much at night. So, um, he, uh, and then, of course, he wanted to go with a, a little bit larger sign that's more readable from the street. So like I say, the, the nail care was eight-inch, uh, tall letters. We just moved them up from eight-inch to fifteen-inch letters. And then, of course, we revised the drawings per Mr. France's, uh, uh, revisions, and, and we met every one but one, which was the, the shape of the letters. Uh, but we kept the shape of the letters because that was what was approved last time, and, uh, they, that's their logo that they're going to use on their stores, so they wanted to be, uh, wholesome consistency with their signage, so, we decided to just make the set of letters a little bit bigger, staying under the code, and making it more readable, uh, because he did take more frontage there.
All right, uh, thank you. Um, Mr. France, do you want to go over your thoughts?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Westbrook's. Um, yeah, so the, the applicant did capture, uh, everything, um, that's sort of gone, gone on to date in terms of my original report dated April eleventh. And I'm not sure there's, there's really any, um, need to go through that, because all the items that were on that report are addressed, except the one that, um, the applicant stated, which is the script-style writing. The only thing I'm, I'm curious about, and perhaps the Board, um, Secretary can shed some light on this. I, I did, did review this in February of two thousand twenty, so, um, not a couple of months ago, it was over a year ago, and I looked back at that report, and that report had many of these same issues, and, um, I recommended it be tabled. I'm not sure if it came back and got approved, or I don't recall, but, um, that was my, my last report until now, April of two thousand twenty-one, so maybe that would be something that we should get some, um, sort of light shed on, just to confirm the status of that, uh, previous review, um, over a year ago.
I can look.
Yeah, the salesman that handled, the salesman that handled that years, or handled that then, he, he is no longer with us, so, uh, when, uh, the owner called me about the new sign, so I just took it over, and I pulled all the prints up, and I had talked to the salesman, and he had said that, um, you know, he, he had a permit and everything on it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I was just looking back on the city's website to see if I see, I see the agenda that had that on there. I don't, I think we canceled the March one, I think, because that's when the whole world flipped upside down, and I think we missed a meeting. But I don't see, I don't see the minutes up there, and see if we stated what we did with that.
Uh, Mr. Russell, could I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
If, um, I, I think we've done it before, if it's somebody's national logo with a script writing, uh, haven't we allowed that before, and I do notice in the Macedonia Commons rules, they're, they're kind of ancient, uh, nineteen ninety-four, that, uh, they have an exhibit, assigned criteria for miscellaneous stores. If script-style letters are permitted with, it's a patented trademark, but I don't know if we ever went that far, I, I'm not sure, maybe it is a, maybe this logo have that script on, on all their other stores. That, I wonder if we could approve that, if, if that's the case.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You, you can't, unless the sign, unless the, um, signage criteria is amended, it's pretty specific that script-style letters are prohibited, and that's why I, I hesitate to say that this sign was approved, um, a year ago, because the commission doesn't have that ability to waiver from the approved criteria. And these, the criteria were amended by the Planning Commission in two thousand fourteen at the, um, property owner's request. And then I also, um, know that we have since also amended or approved , um, different colors since that time, in two thousand twenty, we did that as well. And of course, we amended the Planning and Zoning Code, um, the, the Sign Code chapter specifically to recognize, um, these signage criteria packages for the individual commercial plazas, and those take, um, authority over the code.
The, this, uh, the script, Brian, the, the script-style writing, I don't think that was changed. As long as they patent it with the U.S. Patent Office, that's what I'm reading in this. You, you and I talked about that same, uh, uh, rules, it's the Macedonia Common Sign Plan, the Specialized Sign Plan, and that seemed to be a, some kind of exhibit, I don't know if we changed that, maybe they could, maybe they could patent the thing, I don't know, to get the script style, or say they will.
Yeah, and I'm not, um, I don't, uh, I'm not following necessarily the patent issue, because the, the common sign criteria doesn't speak to patent issues. It just states that, um, sign criteria for miscellaneous stores, which is Exhibit A, states that no script style is, is permitted.
Brian, I just, uh, emailed you the minutes from the meeting when they went to the last planning commission.
No, okay, I can, real quick, I can look at that.
Was that the February in two thousand twenty?
It was, yes, yes.
And I, and I show that I paid, uh, or Jim, the other salesman, paid, um, for the permit of fifty-nine seventy-four.
So I'm, I'm looking at the minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, um, so, and they're, they're, they're pretty, uh, pretty brief, so I'll just go ahead and read you what that, um, basically states. Uh, Jim O'Neill, I think, was the, the salesperson we refer to, um, was present, I read my, my comments and recommended that the proposal be tabled. Mr. Niguan indicated that the unit is eighteen, the frontage is thirty feet. Uh, Mr. Cox asked if. Mr. Cox asked if the proposal could be approved administratively. Mr. France answered yes. Mr. Monaco commented that he would have the resubmital sent to the planning commission. There was much discussion of the color. Mr. O'Neil commented that he will adhere to the city planner's comments. Mr. Chivon commented he was reluctant to approve with an administrative review. Mr. O'Neil commented he was working with a deadline. It would be, it would take four to six weeks to make the sign. Stated he would have an updated submission by Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, to turn in the building department. Mr. Cox motioned to approve blue and gold colors with administrative review of the items mentioned by the city planner. Vladezak seconded. So it, it was approved subject to my comments, which my comments stated that the script style writing was not permissible. So I think that remains to be an outstanding issue that needs to be cleared up. Insofar as scripts not allowed in the commons criteria. And the only way to change that would be by a request of the, the property owner, the building owner, to request a change to the commons sign criteria. Planning Commission would put that on as an agenda item, discuss it and could approve it if they so choose to. But until that happens, the script style is prohibited.
Okay. So it looks like we're in kind of a weird spot here. It sounds like we cannot approve it. We could table it. It sounds like I think the intention, at least of your comments, Mr. France, was to get all those little issues to get done. Mr. Chivon is probably correct and not feeling comfortable with that particular administrative review. But we, we let it go through because of their timeframe. And then it sounds like somehow the, the script lettering got approved by the building department or whatever plan was submitted. I don't know what that plan was. And I don't think anybody here probably recalls it. It was, Mr. Monaco was, was probably the one who received of that. I guess, yeah, the, the suggestion that Mr. France made, either the lettering would have to change or the, the, the sign package itself could be requested by the, by the property owner to be updated and we could consider that. But short of that, there's not really a, the code or the sign package says one specific thing and strictly prohibits that. It's not like even something that's silent on it. Sounds like it actually strictly prohibits the script language. I don't know that I would necessarily be opposed to it if the owner requested the change to the package. But it sounds like we, we just simply can't approve it because it's not in compliance. Am I interpreting that right, Mr. France?
Yeah, I, the only thing I would say is it's not, not really an interpretation. It's that, that is something that the commission doesn't have authority right now within the criteria to alter. So it would have to do one of the two things you, you stated. Either go to block style lettering, which it can be approved tonight and they can move forward and get their permit. Or a request through the building owner to amend the, to amend the sign criteria. That goes on as a separate item, talked about at the commission. If approved, then it would go into effect.
So the way I take this then is that Osborne Properties, the owner, would have to submit something to the building department to change the criteria. I mean, because everything, there's nothing that's rhyme or reason on the plaza. So I mean, script lettering, I mean, this is very tasteful. So I mean, but am I correct in saying that the, the, the owner has to amend it to the city?
Has to request that and then it would come back to the planning commission.
Okay, so that would be one, that'd be like next month's meeting. And then, then the fall, could we be on the same meeting after the, or can we be in like on next month's meeting after that, if it gets approval?
I, I would believe we could, you could be on the same meeting.
True, okay. I mean, yeah, we already got a sign up there. So I mean, it's not like we don't have a sign and we need a sign. So, but I guess that's why I'll, I'll talk to the Osborne Properties and see if I can get that changed and have them submit something and go from there.
And they should be familiar with that process and familiar with the building department. And he's requested things similar to this in the past.
Mr. Westbrook, let me ask one last question. I hate to beat, beat this to death though, but I'm sitting here looking at the Macedonia Common Sign Plan, which is a specialized plan, which was then the owners, which was developers diversified. And Exhibit A, Item Five reads as follows. "The lettering style shall be chosen by the tenant, subject to landlord approval. The letters shall be generally block style with script style letters permitted when the lettering is a patented trademark on file with the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office." So that's one other exception. I don't know if, if this particular store has a patented trademark or not. And maybe that's the other way of doing it because, unless this thing has been overruled somewhere. But this is exactly what I'm reading from the, the document given us by the planning department. It's a Macedonia Common Sign Plan. It was a long time ago, 1994, with developers diversified. It's no longer, it wasn't Osborne then. But that's the way it reads, Item Five. And Brian, you probably have that in front of you, don't you? Maybe. That'd be a second way of doing it, I think, maybe.
Sure, appreciate that.
And it might not be patented trademark.
You don't happen to know that information?
I don't know that offhand. No, I'd have to check with the owner on that.
I'll have you there, Mr. France. We lost you visually.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I'm, I'm trying to find what Mr. Cox has. I don't have a version of the criteria that states anything about a patent from the U.S. I don't have that language. So when was that changes? When was that changed?
Date on it, Brian, but it, it, there were sign criteria for major retail stores. And then there's sign criteria for miscellaneous stores, which maybe this is. And the sign criteria for major retail stores was, was the, the color. You and I went over that, the color, subject to the planning commission approval. And I think that was mixed later. And so I, I think that that, anyway, that's just a thought I just brought out.
So the version I have contradicts that. Item number five, "The lettering style shall be chosen by the tenant. All letters assigned shall be the same style. The letters shall be generally block style with script style letters being prohibited."
Wow, mine reads differently.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, and, and.
If there's an update date on here.
Here, if you could see, it's going to be tough to see. But I make notes right into my document, my master, which was the original that I gave to the city years ago because they didn't have it. And in this document, I make notes in red and I date the changes. I don't have that. It's possible I missed it and I went into hibernation for the winter and just didn't write it in my version. That's certainly possible. But I would, I would say we should really track that down if we change that language to read that way. Because my version is exactly what, is exactly what Mr. Roberts said just then.
And mine is in a memo dated March 24th, 1994, revised March 28th at a special meeting of the planning commission. But still the year of 1994 is what it looks like I'm reading from. So, Mr. Cox, if yours is a newer date than that, that might.
You know, there is no date on it. So I don't know where that came. I do see what you're talking about, but I have, I have apparently a lot more pages than you do.
So and I'll also note on the front of my book, I wrote in red, "Up to date as of February 2nd, 2020." So I, I don't know where that language came from, Mr. Cox. But I, I probably, I feel very strongly that being that I have notes all over my book, that this is probably most up to date. And somehow you got something that maybe was some language that was floating around as suggested or, but it never got approved.
Could be true because it is not dated.
Yeah.
And it's Exhibit A and I'll email it and do, or scan it and email it, look at it. It, it doesn't matter though. It'd be another way of doing it, I think. But, but.
Well, I guess, I guess, so, so two things that, that would, you know, they can look into that patent issue and see if there is something, if there is an option and someone's got, see what the newest is. But I, I'm guessing that probably the, the most likely way is, is the request through the developer or the owner. And, and then you could be on the same meeting as, as that, as that request.
Okay, well, I mean, that's what we'll do then. I mean, if that's, I can say, I'll, I'll talk to Osborne Properties and figure out and have, hopefully they'll submit it. And I don't think it's a big problem. I think they'll definitely, they approved the sign already, twice now. So I'll get with them tomorrow and see what I can do.
All right, I appreciate that.
And the next meeting is on the 17th, correct?
Is that sound right?
May 17th.
Yes, May 17th. And the deadline to have your paperwork in is April 23rd.
All right, I'll talk to them. So we might have to skip, we might have to move it out to meetings. So I don't know if they move that fast, though.
Mr. France?
Yeah.
I'm not, since I've been on the commission, I've not gone through the process of like a developer submitting, you know, a more of a universal change of signs. But if, if that came in front of us, it sounds like it may not have time to, for them to apply. Let's just say he did that. Is that a longer process than one meeting? Like I just want to make sure we set a reasonable timeline for the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if it's just script style that's being changed, then I think, you know, one meeting is probably fine unless you, you guys feel as though you need more time to evaluate that. But if that's the only issue, my suspicion is each of you will be thinking about that going into the next meeting starting this evening. If they come back and there's multiple amendments being proposed, then yes, I think it's probably very fair to say that we need to, you know, sit back and kind of evaluate this a little more than just one meeting. Again, if it's just simple script, yeah, I think that's, you know, a quick discussion and can, can approve that in one meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, someone want to make a motion for tonight? So we're tabling it? Yeah, I think it's better, only, only choice. All right, then I'll make a motion that we table it.
I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion? Susan, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, sorry. Hopefully we can get this taken care of at the next meeting. Hopefully they can, they can hurry up and get something submitted.
We'll see what we can do then. I appreciate it. But if we have to move it out, another meeting, like the, the June meeting, that should be okay, right?
Yeah.
The table hold, okay. All right, I'm going to push in tomorrow. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Have a nice night.
All right, back to the agenda. All right, the next one is Mr. Winkelman for St. Gregorio's at 1252 East Aurora Road. Mr. Winkelman, are you here?
Yeah, yes, if everything's working, I'm here.
Yep, we hear you. I see you now.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I will, I pull, I'll pull up your stuff. If you just want to give a brief overview of what, what, what your, changes you're proposing here.
Well, the everything was, everything was previously approved by the commission. And construction began last, last year. Well, as everybody knows, in the middle of the mess, construction began. And we got through the winter and got the thing finished. And the, the church folks had the opportunity to see the reality of the size of things and the distance back from the street and readability. They did a few, you know, mock-up things and realized that the overall sign, first of all, the idea of putting Macedonia Ohio at the bottom of the sign seemed a little redundant since the church was in Macedonia. And, and taking that out would enable them to increase the size a little bit so that the actual name of the church itself, rather than its location, would be more readable from the street. And, and I mentioned in the paperwork that I submitted, I don't really know where the idea of the back lighting came from because I recognized in the beginning, a couple of years ago, when we went through this, that it was going to be lit from the ground. And I think some, somebody brought up the idea of readability. And, and again, what happens to this sign? Where there's snow on the ground and the shrubs grow up and it's not maintained or the lights burn out. And the advantage of the newer technology of LED lighting and the thousands and thousands of hours that it's good for. And so they came up with the idea of wanting to do the backlit sign. So that's why we're at the presentation that we have was to increase the area somewhat after dropping Macedonia, Ohio. And then doing the LED back lighting.
Okay, okay. Well.
I think that's it.
Okay, Mr. France, do you want to go over your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the, the applicant, yeah, I agree. It was always supposed to be groundlit. And so apparently it's, they've decided to go with the backlit sign, which I think they're going for a variance as a result of that. The ground lighting, I don't think requires a, a variance. But nevertheless, the sign itself is a little over 40 square feet. The religious symbols are exempt from regulation pursuant to 117905A6 of the planning zoning code. The identification signage permitted for the building based on the frontage is a little over 110 square feet, 111.5. So the sign is submitted at a little over 40 square feet. It's acceptable and would recommend approval. I, I guess, subject to the BZA ruling on the backlit request.
Okay, that sounds pretty good. Mr. Rodick, anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any comments.
All right. Committee, do you guys have any, Commissioner, do you have any thoughts?
Nope.
Okay, well, it sounds like it could be approved. Everything's in, works out size and everything. So if no one's got any thoughts, I'll make a motion to approve the signage change request as submitted.
I'd second that.
All right, any more discussion? Susan, you want to do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Here, yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Vladezak.
All right, well, Mr. Winkelman, thanks for coming back. I think this is like the, the fifth time you've been here for this project. Maybe, maybe the last, I don't know. We'll see.
You get a little familiar, yes.
All right, thanks. Yeah.
Thank you very much for your help, appreciate it.
All right. All right, next on the agenda is Drew Gatliff with Oleo Development, signage for Raising Canes. I will control the, the present, or the, the, the slides up on the screen, but I've got to abstain from this one. So if you guys need something, just jump in and I'll turn, turn this over to Mr. Chivon just as I've done for the last few meetings. So it's all yours, Joe. You're the boss. You're the boss.
Thank you. Okay, first of all, do we have a representative from Raising Kane present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, would you be so kind as to explain what you're doing here now?
Yes, so we are coming for the signage portion. We had gotten the approval on the architectural and had discussed a little bit the signage, but needed to have a formal signage submission here. So that is what we are proposing here. So the, the front tower, we had modified from the existing. The existing, as it was with Steak and Shake, raised that tower and are treating that kind of a three-sided tower with signs on all three sides. And then also a sign over the, the side entrance, which we do have a gable tower there as well. And then we are proposing the mural in between the two drive-through windows, as well as a monument sign out at the, at the road.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
So the, the wall signs are internally illuminated. I call them four by eights, they're just slightly under that, so they are 31 square feet, they're like three foot 10 by eight feet. And then the hand-painted mural is painted directly on the brick and there is a, a reason for the mural is twofold. The first is that when they did the, when they did the very first location, they uncovered a mural when they renovated the interior. And so they, they took that and they took the imagery, so they took the script from it as well as, you know, the colors in order to create their logo. So it pays homage back to the original location. And in addition to that, it also has the community name painted in the bottom left-hand corner to talk about or to give that outward expression of the tie to the community. We also do a lot of memorabilia inside the building, but this is our, this is on the outside, that tie to the community. And, and we do, I say we, so Raising Canes does a lot of community involvement through fundraisers and other give backs through the marketing campaigns. And so again, this is just, you know, expressing the community that they serve.
Thank you. Mr. Franz, would you be so kind as to read your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will. My report's dated April 11th and, and so my comments, some of them have already been addressed. I had, or Drew had to sit through a long phone call with me on, I think it was a Saturday or Sunday, talking about this. But we worked, worked through all this and really there's only a couple of issues to which they have applied to the board of zoning appeals for, so I'll, I'll go through briefly. The details have been since provided, so my opening paragraph speaks to the details of the signage. Those have been since provided after my, my call withdrew, so I looked those over and have no concern. I don't recall though seeing any instructional signage. I'm not sure if there is any specific instructional signage on the, proposed on the building or on the, on the ground, but just ultimately that, if there is, that should be submitted. So as far as the square footage allowed for this particular request, the, the code under 117903F2, as we know, provides two square feet of identification signage for each foot of, linear foot of building frontage. So this building reusing the Steak and Shake building is long and narrow, so provides a more limited frontage for the building facing 82. But the code, and that frontage, by the way, is approximately 42 feet, giving about 84 square feet of signage. Now, the code does provide for certain circumstances, in this case where a customer entrance, customer entrance faces a, the side lot, in this case. You can have additional square footages under 117907F1. The limitation on that is a total of up to 75 square feet. In this case, the site does qualify for that full 75 square feet. Essentially, you get that by treating the side building facade as though it was a main facade. Times it by the two square feet per linear foot, gives you 224. And then, because the frontage is about 112. And then you'd multiply that further by 40%, which gets you close to 90 square feet, but you don't fully get that because again, the code caps it at a total of 75. The original 84 and the bonus of 75 gets you to about 159 square feet for the site. The signs combined together, as the applicant pointed out, there are two wall signs on the east and west elevation. The signs combined together equal around 256 square feet, so the 159 that's permissible will require a variance. So the applicant is, and again, is, has applied for a variance for the additional square footage, as well as under 117903C1. The code limits the building elevations to only have one sign per elevation. And again, as I had noted, the east and west elevations do have two, so two variances that I believe the applicant's applied for. No concerns about the colors and the specific material types now that we have that information contained in an email a week or so ago. But I'd recommend approval, subject to the board of zoning appeals favorably ruling on the two variance requests.
Okay. Anyone have any comments?
No.
Okay. You, you mentioned something about instructional signs. They are shown, are they not, or they're going to be, or what is the status? Do you mind that, Mr. Franz?
Yeah, I, I don't see those indicated on a plan. Drew, you're there, right Drew?
Yes.
Have you, and I could just have missed it, have you shown instructional signage or are you having any?
No, we don't have any. We do have, you know, our menu boards, but there is no instructional signage other than stop signs and do not enters. And those are standard, so we don't have anything that says drive-through or anything specific to, to that regard.
So, Mr. Chairman, then, as the applicant stated here, they don't have any, so that's really a moot point at this time.
Very good, okay. Okay, any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion? Okay, okay, I'll give my shot then. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this pending approval from the building and zoning approval, building and zoning department on their, the signs that they have submitted. That sound appropriate, Mr. Franz?
Mr. Chair, I think I heard you, you have a second, so yes, I, I think that that motion I, I heard was to approve it as submitted, subject to the variances being favorably approved by the board of zoning appeals.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Okay, okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Westbrook?
He's abstained.
He abstained.
Abstained.
I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Valadis.
Okay.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you, Joe.
With that, I will turn it, turn it back over to Mr. Westbrook.
Meeting back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, next one is Dominion Energy at 9796 Shepherd Road. Is there someone here for that?
Yes, Kurt Smack with Four Point Architectural.
All right.
I'm, I'm traveling currently, so my camera's not active. I don't want to get any of you guys sick.
While you're driving, are you able to?
No, no, I'm not driving. My wife is driving, actually.
Oh, okay, that's good. Do you mind giving a brief overview of what you're, what you're proposing here?
Sure, sure, okay, this is a, a new building for Dominion Energy. They will be using it for storage of their back trucks, dump trucks and so forth, a lot of their vehicles for their fleet during the nighttime, because right now they currently have to house them in various other shops and it's sometimes inconvenient to have to run over to those shops to pick up their vehicles. They don't drive these vehicles home at night. These are meant to be stored in a facility and the, the users, the staff, come in their personal vehicles, park their personal vehicles, get in the trucks and then drive them out to wherever they have to go to do their work. And then come back at night, park them inside the garage and then get back in their personal vehicles and leave. So there basically is no occupancy during the day for this facility to speak of, like one person. And then just the primary occupancy is in the early morning and then mid-afternoon or so whenever they return back to their, to this facility. The facility itself is, I'll probably let other people describe that. I've got Jim Presuto on from our firm, as well as Lori Haas from the civil engineering firm that can talk more about drainage, sewers and setbacks and all that kind of stuff. Jim will just have to help me out with drawings because I don't have access to those on the phone here very easily. And then Trevor Roth with Dominion Energy is also on, so he can answer any specific questions from Dominion Energy. Basically, the building is a one-story high building. It's a primarily a pre-engineered building, about 120 feet long, and then. It's about a single-story, small addition to the north of that, which houses the, any kind of staff spaces like locker rooms or showers, a crew room, small office, mechanical spaces and so forth. And that's going to be clad in pretty much metal siding and some brick masonry, winged scoting and so forth. It's about, about 200 feet back from the street, I believe, is where it is. It's through a copse of trees that exist right now, so we're going to take out some of those trees behind where the building will sit. But then the ones against the street will primarily remain, although we do have to remove a few just to get some trenching for electrical and power and so forth. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. Anybody else from your team need to speak or?
Well, I don't know, let's see, I'm looking at the drawing, I'm looking at your screen right now. So yeah, this building is, that little gravel area just to the north where those big chunks of trees are basically, is, yeah, right there where your cursor is, that's primarily where the building's going to sit. What we have as a constraint, I will bring it to speed on the constraints for this, this site, is that as you know, it's an existing Dominion transmission pipeline site. So a lot of large, you know, 36-inch diameter gas lines come into this site that get valves and transferred and so forth and so on. I'm sure Trevor could tell you all sorts of stories. But there is a couple of lines that are actually running almost right next to that gravel roadway that goes back from the main road, from Shepherd Road back to the building, that's, that we can't move, that they're just too big and they serve too many customers. So our building was kind of landlocked, I guess you could say, as to where it could be located. And the Dominion itself, of course, dictated how, what had to be served, what the building had to house, given the number of trucks and staff and so forth. So we kind of had a, a specific program to go by, so I. But I don't know if, if, Lori, if you want to say anything more specific about any specific setback requirements and/or. Sewers and so forth, how you're bringing the services onto the site?
Yeah.
There she is, okay.
Yeah, the setbacks are pretty much set the way that Kurt defined with existing transmission lines that are just south of the building. So we're about 10 feet away right there, which is about as close as anybody wants to get to a high-pressure gas line. The stormwater, we're all capturing and taking to a detention basin in the rear. We understand that the sanitary sewer is owned by the city of Twinsburg, so we will have to work out some kind of assessment, I guess, to be able to tie into that. Which I don't think should be any problem at all, and we understand we need to talk to Cleveland Water regarding the water connection.
I noticed also that NEORSD has jurisdiction for the sanitaries or stormwater or something like that, right?
They just kind of review it to make sure that we're complying, I believe. That's the way that works.
Okay. And I think I sent a, a kind of, kind of a narrative. Bob Rodeck asked me to send a kind of a narrative as to where, you know, we stood with regards to Mr. Franz's comments, and I know he'll bring that whole thing up, obviously, when he talks, but just so you know, it's all part of the record, so. I think that's it.
Okay, Mr. Franz, I want to start with you and your, your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, as the applicant stated, I, I have reviewed the comments that came back with regard to my original memo, which is dated April 11th. And then the addendum memo dated April 17th in response to some information provided over email. So I'll, I'll go through that, and that information was provided on April 15th. So to my original April 11th report, and as the applicant stated, they're proposing a storage garage. And associated with that storage garage, there shows outdoor storage of materials, gravel, sand. And I'm not necessarily what a reclamation area is, but maybe the applicant described that at some point. So there's some outdoor storage associated with this as well. Building is approximately, I think, around 16,000 square feet. And so we started to talk on, or talked to or touch on the zoning issue. Site is zoned RP Residential Park District. And again, adjacent to that existing Dominion facility to the south, that facility is a legal non-conforming use of records, zoned R1 Residence District. As I pointed out in my original email, the storage garage and the outdoor storage are neither permitted or conditionally permitted in the RP district. Now, I've since learned that the applicant, Dominion Energy, did go to the Board of Zoning Appeals in October of 2020. What exactly that request was, I'm not sure, but it sounds like they did receive a variance. I know it was a use variance request. Again, I don't know if that was for the, for the storage garage or if that was included specifically the outdoor storage materials. I don't know. It was a use variance. I don't know if setback variance were included. So that, that does remain to be an item that would need to be discussed and talked through, and that carries forth in both of my, my reports. With regard to that issue, the applicant felt that the property to the, to the north is a church and not residentially used. The way the code reads is specifically relates to residentially zoned land and not uses. So the side and rear yard setbacks do apply to the residentially zoned property, in this case, the minimum 70 feet. Now, we'll talk to here in, in the report in a minute, but that 70 feet is actually increased. The code has a requirement that states that the minimum is increased by one foot for every foot of building length facing. Greater than, every foot of building length greater than 50 feet facing the side yard, no greater than 150 feet. So in this case, building wall facing the side yard's approximately 90 feet, so a 90-foot setback would be required. So I'll go back to my, my original report, the April 11th, and that, that's, we'll go to page two, and that issue of the, the side yard setback is called out here. And that's assuming general industrial standards or limited industrial standards, either way, they both. Um, and that's assuming general industrial standards or limited industrial standards. Either way, they both require that ninety-foot approximate setback based on the, the building length. Um, now, I've noted that the outdoor storage does carry a greater setback. It's approximately forty-eight feet to that north property line, and I don't know if that was specifically addressed in the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, uh, review of this particular request, but the code does require that that setback be three hundred feet. Um, and I know and appreciate the applicant's difficulty with the gas lines on the property. Um, and so that's certainly something that, um, the Board of Zoning Appeals would, uh, would take into consideration. Now, again, whether or not that was specifically discussed, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, so then, under section eleven, eleven seventy-one, eleven, C through E, which is the ostrich parking section of the code, um, I have on page two of my report, I speak to the number of parking spaces. Uh, it looks like twenty are required and twenty are proposed, so the, the plan itself is good there. The only minor change that needs to occur is the two parking spaces, um, at the northern end of that row of parking as you come in off of Shepherd Road. Those spaces are located within the required fifteen-foot side yard setback. But in my addendum report, you'll note that the applicant addressed that issue and stated they would, um, move those parking spaces in compliance with code. So, uh, that, that should not be an issue if there's, um, a willingness to do that. And then the landscaping that I pointed out, um, there's none proposed. The applicant states they felt there's fair amount of landscaping on the site, would agree there's a decent amount to the north. Um, but, um, I do think along the main road, there's certainly room for some additional landscaping. Um, and the applicant stated, and I noticed in my addendum report that they would, um, add additional landscaping if planning commission so desired. I would recommend that be done, and then that's a mixture of deciduous and coniferous species. Um, sight lighting, I pointed out about the half-foot candle standard, the north property line, there's some exceedance of that half, half-foot candle. And in the addendum report, you'll notice that, um, the applicant did state that they would address that and comply with the half-foot candle limitation. So I think that that's, um, going to be addressed by the applicant. So really, uh, I, I would recommend approval subject to confirmation of the, the variance issue. Again, it sounds like the use variance to allow the industrial use in the RP district across. The question is, um, what setbacks were noted when that review occurred? And, um, and, and whether or not the outdoor storage was part of that application. And I can answer any questions the commission may have.
Mr. Francis, I just emailed you, um, the BZA minutes from October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty BZA meeting.
And I can, I can take a look at those. Um, I didn't see them. I was trying to find them online. I could have missed them. So I, I can take a look at those in my, my email.
I just emailed them to you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Kurt Smack. I'll just, uh, talk to that point, Brian. Um, uh, I, I know the outdoor storage was shown on those preliminary drawings for the BZA, uh, conditional use, uh, application. I don't know if we specifically talked about setbacks in that meeting. I know that one of the members, I reviewed the video testimony from the meeting prior to this one, uh, from that particular BZA meeting, and I remember one of the members saying that, "Well, I have no problem with it as long as the planning commissioner, you know, can, you know, reviews the setback requirements," you know, "I don't think you'd do it," basically. Uh, and agrees with it. So, um, uh, so I, I can't say if it was specific or not. You can obviously check what the minutes were, but, um, I do not recall. I think I have a copy of the minutes here, actually. Uh, let's see, here we go. Uh, let me see here, twelve thousand. People see the building from the road, two hundred feet away. Uh, discuss the truck.
Think we're losing you a little bit.
That was pretty much it. It was more of a generalistic, I'm sorry.
We lost you there for, for a couple of seconds, but we hear you.
Oh, I'm, yeah, cellphone coverage. Um, I'm coming up past New Philly right now, or just past New Philly, so who knows what's happening around here in the hills of Ohio. Um, anyway, so it was kind of more of a general, uh, uh, approval, I think, for the use of the building in that district. I don't believe we got into anything very specific in terms of setbacks. We talked about the two-hundred-foot setback from the road. We did not talk about the northern setback. I know we look at the zoning code for LI, limited industrial, and said, "Okay, well, fifty feet. All right, great." But we probably didn't look a little further and saw that, you know, the extra foot per every foot after fifty. Um, unfortunately, I'll have to say that, you know, to, to shove it down under forty feet, we, the building wouldn't be buildable because we would lose way too much function in the building, um, for that. But then that's, that's an argument for BZA, obviously, so.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Mr. Chairman, I, I have the, um, minutes up and Mr. Smack stated, it, it really was a very general discussion related to a use variance for, um, for the, uh, industrial use, the storage garage in the RP district. Unfortunately, there's no discussion about the outdoor storage setbacks associated with that, the fifty versus ninety. So I would agree that, that those are definitely arsh, that they seem like strong arguments to have, um, when going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but just based on what I'm seeing, uh, I feel like it was just a use question and not a dimensional variance question, so there probably would have been more than just the uses addressed at the meeting. So I, I think that from what I'm seeing, that that issue would need to be taken up by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And they do state at the end of the, the, um, the minutes here that, um, the planning commission would be reviewing the landscaping and other, and other requirements. So I think it does, it does feel like, again, they just addressed the use of the storage garage and not necessarily outdoor storage or associated setback.
Okay. That's unfortunate. Um, so I guess the, the big, the biggest issues on this is, is, is primarily the setback. I mean, there's little things like you, you talked about the landscaping, and I think they said they could take, you know, they'd be willing to do some more lighting, they'd be willing to adjust that, the parking space, they'd be willing to fix that. Um, but really, it's the setbacks that either, either the outdoor storage is not allowed and the setbacks are okay, or the outdoor storage is allowed and the setbacks are not okay. Is that how, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I, I think that, um, there's two issues. You need to address the use issue of outdoor storage. Outdoor storage is only allowed in one district, which is the general industrial district, and under very strict parameters. So you have a use issue that needs to be addressed if the Board is only, it doesn't look like, and again, the, I didn't watch the video. The video might shed some more light on this, but the minutes don't reflect discussion about the outdoor storage use. That's a use issue. Um, but it also, that use issue contains a setback issue of the three hundred feet versus the fifty or whatever is proposed. I would agree to move it three hundred feet. It, it's just not feasible, um, given what they're, they're trying to attempt to accomplish on this part of the property. Um, but I think that has to be dealt with at the BZA. So it's a use and setback issue on the outdoor storage, and then a setback issue on the building itself. So it feels like three variances need to be addressed by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's put that on hold for a second, keep those three issues in mind. Um, I'll jump around. Mr. Gelati, do you have, uh, comments on this?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, Chairman. Um, I would imagine the planning commission members and the applicant had seen my, uh, memo, uh, including the most, uh, updated, uh, memo from, uh, Friday. Uh, seven comments on there, one through five are, are self-explanatory. Number six and seven, uh, apply to the sanitary sewer, uh, connection, which the applicant already brought up earlier here, uh, in the meeting. Um, so we would require that the connection be bored under Shepherd Road, uh, no open trench. Uh, the sewer is actually owned by the city of Twinsburg, uh, so there would have to be a permit, uh, obtained by the applicant from the city of Twinsburg. Uh, and I believe the sewer, uh, when it was installed, was paid for, uh, through an assessment, uh, to, uh, the property owners along Shepherd Road, so, uh, as such, the tap and fee would, would have to be calculated. Uh, otherwise, uh, you know, I would recommend that the, uh, planning commission, at least from an engineering point of view, uh, could provide a, uh, a preliminary approval tonight pending a, uh, uh, final administrative review. Thanks, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bell, I think you had a couple of comments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, that once they.
You might, uh, I think we lost your audio for a second. You were unmuted for a second, and you're muted again. There you go.
I think I'm back.
You are.
That based on a preliminary review of the size of that building, there are several fire code requirements that will, will apply, but, uh, that can be handled through the plan review for the, uh, building, building plans.
Okay. All right, that's it for that. Okay, uh, Mr. Rodek, do you have any, any comments or any questions?
Yeah, just to go back to the Board of Appeals in October, the, uh, the motion was specifically, um, to, uh, to allow a twelve thousand square foot storage building in the RP district. Uh, so it seems, you know, what, what Brian said is absolutely correct. You know, they would have to come back for, uh, the other uses, uh, associated with, uh, uh, the outdoor storage and the setbacks.
Okay, okay. But, yeah, that sounds like that's going to have to be the case. Um, commissions, do you guys have any questions or comments?
Uh, Kevin, do you think we should maybe table this then while they get those other variances going?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think this is one that we could, that we could just say, you know, contingent on, because I, I'm just not sure what they're going to come back with unless, unless Mr. Francis, unless you feel different.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I, I think it's the safest is a tabling route, um, but, um, you know, I guess the other, it's, it's difficult to fully evaluate it if, is there things that, so let's assume, I guess I have a question for the commission. Let's assume the, the outdoor storage use is approved in that location, the setbacks or, um, the three hundred feet are, are waived and the fifty or whatever it is that's proposed is approved, and that a dimensional variance for the ninety versus the setback provided is, is issued. So three variances are, are given. But the BZA does not tackle, tackle the screening issue because those setbacks, the reason for those setbacks really is to screen the use from the adjoining residentially zoned property. So I think some level of screening would be appropriate. In addition, I understand there's a lot of landscaping on the property to the north. The, the issue there is that, that may not always be there. Um, and so, uh, we want to try to provide some of that permanent screening on the subject property. I know there's a retaining wall there that's provided on that north side, so I'm not sure how that plays into with some screening, but I think to evaluate that, it would be best to see a landscape plan, have a landscape architect work up a plan that provides some screening details along that north property line, and then that, that could be approved with the, the plan on Reese's middle. You could, if you were so inclined to administratively approve, approve a preliminary plan subject to, um, but again, it's kind of getting into the detail of what exactly are you approving because at the end of the day, that, that's, that the trees to the north may or may not be there in the long run.
I, I, I agree. I, I think that's the right thing to do. Some, sometimes if it's pretty minor stuff, we can, we can do a contingent, but I think this is a little more significant. Um, yeah, I'd like to see what they come back with depending on the approvals and, and, and some of your comments. I, I think I would like to see some screening. It looks like the landscaping at the back might be getting a bit thinner, you know, at the north side of it. Um, they're going to be taking out some of the stuff here along the street, at least a little bit of it.
Right.
The screen, and, yeah, you've got a pretty good view of it as you're, as you're heading north on the road. Um, so maybe there's something up in the vicinity of the building, or maybe something even out here along the road might, might be nice to have. Um, but yeah, I think, I think my mind tabling is probably the right thing to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I don't know even know if this falls under, um, the planning commission, but think, knowing that that's, um, what's that, residential park? Um, do we even get into, i- if there's increased truck traffic, it does, is there a noise factor to consider, considering that it's within a residential district? That noise factor doesn't exist today with larger-sized trucks. When they back up, they beep loud engines, that kind of stuff, or is that not really under our jurisdiction?
Mr. Francis might be better to guess something.
Yeah, so, um, that's a great question, and that's, and that's typically stuff that's contemplated with the use variance request. Um, again, I, I didn't see any, just in the quick review of the minutes, if that came up or not. But I do think that that, that's okay, that the commission certainly could take that into consideration. The separation of uses at the end of the day is really the commission's bailiwick, and you're really where you need to lie with your authority to control land uses. And so regardless if the BZA took it up or not, you can now, and a way to do that is with screening. Some type of dense, um, dense, uh, screening that will provide relief to the north. Again, the, the church owns it now, but, you know, who knows in, in the long term if the, if the church will be there, or if, um, they sell to a, a residential developer and new houses go in, and that's, that's certainly possible. Um, we know one thing, Dominion is not going anywhere. This is a pretty significant facility. And, uh, and great. I mean, and the city, I think the city appreciates them and, and all their efforts they're doing with, um, with the site plan and really being mindful of these issues. So I think we need to address screening and noise that you're speaking to because the fright, those people do go off. Um, I think we need to address that on this property as though the future use to the north could be a residential use.
Yeah, I agree, and that's why I was bringing it up, because I figured if that was going to be addressed at all, it'd be addressed through some type of landscaping. We're already telling them to consider some type of a landscaping plan. It just makes sure it's considered. And I would just, for the record, like to point out as well, the, the, the residential properties that are on the east side of Shepherd Road there as well, too. If there'd be some type of additional screening, similar to what Mr. Westbrook suggested, as you're going north down the road, you could still see that if the, if we're going to screen it for visual, could we maybe also put consideration and screen it for sound, if that's even possible? I don't even know if that's possible. Just throwing that out there, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good idea. Um, I think the other commission members, but I would like to see something probably for that northbound approach. And then, yeah, with the concern that, that some of those trees, you know, looking on the plant, looks like it's going to get, you know, a lot of it taken out potentially. Maybe there's some way to beef that up to, to, you know, put more of a landscape wall would be good.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak for a second?
Sure.
Um, just a quick question on the, um, uh, north side landscaping. I agree with all your comments. Um, I don't know if Dominion will or not, but, uh, they're on the line, so they can always speak up. Uh, I, we have limited space. The retaining wall is one of those prefabricated concrete block, heavy block, you know, step back type of your retaining wall. So it looks decent because it's got a rock face to it and all that kind of stuff. Um, and it's, I think, how far, I think it's like twelve feet away from the property line, Lori? Um, I'm just concerned with the amount of landscaping would get in there and would actually grow, uh, before the driveway. Now, we could do probably physical screening, you know, an actual fence of some kind, or at least board on board or something like that, or some sort of a metal fence or something like that. But I don't know if you're really looking for that, though, because that's almost like a building wall then at that point.
Right. Right.
Soft. Lori, you want?
We, we have about 10 feet to the property line from that retaining wall, and we are showing a fence, so we could do like a board on board fence along that north line, which would help, I think.
Yeah, Chairman, Chairman Joe Giladi here, if I could interject for a moment, uh, uh, some of you guys, yourself or Brian France, uh, may remember the, um, Ambassador Soccer Facility from years ago, uh, and in the end, um, we all agreed and they installed a Acoustablock type wall. Uh, perhaps a similar feature would be in order here.
Okay.
I mean, in reality, though, these trucks are only leaving in the morning and coming back at night, so it's not like it's truck traffic all day long.
Right. Yeah, I think, yeah, ideally, it's, it probably is, it's a daytime thing. Do you know if this, and you probably have it in the plan somewhere, but is the, is the garage, is it a pull-through garage?
Yes, they actually pull around the back first, and then they pull right straight in. So actually, they technically don't back in, they, they pull straight through as a, as a crew of three, essentially, or four vehicles. They all go together, basically.
That's good. I'm sure there's some backing up, you know, when it comes to the gravel storage and the tool shed.
Yeah, there will be some of that. There's a few beeps here and there, you're right.
But hopefully, hopefully it's not, you know, all day and all night. Now, there, there may be emergency things going on and they-
Yeah, there might be, yeah, right.
And maybe that's what the, the screening will help. But I, I think, you know, I think we're probably all in agreement that we'd like to see something, maybe let you guys come up with an, the thoughts, ideas. Yeah, go free to run things past the city, uh, if you've got questions, if this is something that's looking right, but, um, you know, let you guys try and come up with some ideas.
Okay. I mean, just, I, I have no idea what's going inside this building, so this probably won't work, but the shape of the building is long north to south. Could it be shortened so it's longer west to east and give you more room to leave more landscaping buffer to the north side of the property? I'm, I'm not even expecting an answer. I'm just throwing out an idea there.
Right, right. Well, yeah, I mean, you know, we looked at different directions for the building, but once we found out about the gas lines, that were there and the, kinda the compression and the traffic flow on site for the trucks coming in and out and so forth, uh, the, the north-south, um, orientation of the garage doors, uh, it just, it didn't work physically, so, um, yeah, unfortunately. And then if we were to shrink the building by 40 feet, I'd lose two bays. So that would cut out two crews, and that wouldn't work very well, so it would be kind of non-economical for the, for the man. Anyway, but yeah, we'll, we'll definitely study the, the look of, you know, putting more landscaping along the north and, uh, east side facing the street. I, I agree, I think we need something along the east side towards the street because of the, probably the number of trees we're probably bringing down because of the, um, utility installations. Um, as far as coming from the south, looking up towards, of course, that whole, that whole site is wide open, it's got a couple of brick buildings standing on it, it's got some stacks and some pipes, and, you know, it's kind of an industrial look already, so I don't know. I, uh, I don't, I don't know-
I wouldn't-
More screening we wanna put on that north, or that's, whatever, the east side of the site, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that you've gotta like screen the whole, you know-
Yeah, 300 feet or 500 feet or whatever it is.
Yeah, but maybe just something closer to here, just the kinda-
Right.
Visually blocked, especially for some of the neighbors and the sound.
Yeah, neighbors, yeah, across the street, yeah, right, right.
And that's exactly what I was envisioning, just that, that, just directly south of that driveway apron, something that's a few layers-
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
Sure. We, yeah, I can come up with something for sure. So that's one aspect, and then obviously the, uh, the setback for the north and the storage, the three that, uh, Brian mentioned about, uh, the storage use, outdoor storage use within the ally district, uh, storage setback from the north property line, and also the building storage, the build, yeah, obviously the building setback as well, um, for the main building. So, yeah, we'll have to plot that. When is the next BZA deadline? Does anyone, can anyone tell me that is? Without me trying to find it?
I know they've, they've got a meeting coming up, what is it?
Tuesday.
It's around this time, isn't it? Like two days later or something like that? Yeah, Wednesday, I thought, it was like, oh, it's like two days later.
Yeah, so the, I don't know if the deadline's similar to ours, that's, that's, you know, about 10 days or something like that, or if you-
Yes.
It's April 23rd. The BZA deadline is April 23rd.
April 23rd deadline, okay, thank you, Susan.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Chairman?
It doesn't leave you a lot of time.
No, it never does. After, we're kinda used to working under the gun, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we'll get this, we'll get this taken care of. Okay, so I, so I, I understand it, before you go into an official low call thing, whatever, for tabling. Um, so we got the three BZA items. We have screening along the north and east property lines. Uh, is there anything else beyond that? I know we don't have any signage in this package, because, um, I think Dominion usually handles that themselves. Um, you know, actually, where has the sign company come in or whatever, 'cause they're, I don't know if they're gonna, I don't even know if they're gonna have a monument sign out there at all for this particular facility, so, um, that will be addressed later, I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, I mean, there're little, little things, uh, obviously the engineering comments, but those will mostly come through, uh, the engineering review. And then I think there is, you guys, or maybe you agreed to do something with the, the lighting plan to make some adjustments.
Right, you'll address all those things, and I guess we just send those back through when we get them, just send them piecemeal, I guess. Um, and then, uh, uh, as far as reviewing the landscaping ahead of time before the actual planning commission meeting, should I just send comments or plans to Bob Rodick, or?
I think, I think that's, that's, uh, that's probably appropriate.
Okay, cool.
All right. Um, then, uh, unless somebody has some different, I'll make a motion to table this.
I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, I did have just three, I don't mean to belabor, just the three questions if I could. Sorry.
Please do.
Sorry, Brian.
Um, so what's the actual size of the building?
Uh, it's, uh, it's, I believe, well, see, Jim maybe can help me, Jim Presutino, but I believe it was less than 15,000. I thought it was maybe 15,100 or 14,900 or something like that?
It's, uh, 15,365 square feet.
And you went, you went for a use variance, and the use variance is related to a 12,000 square foot building. So it's grown over time?
I saw that in the notes. I saw that in the notes.
And that's okay, it's, it's probably grown over time. Um, and then, uh, there're just two follow-up, the drilling waste reclamation area? Just maybe when you resubmit, you could define what that is? And then, and then, um, what Mr. Roberts was talking about, I, I see the relocated gas line. So do you have some, some schemes that you, you said you spent a fair amount of time looking at this, and it just didn't work? Do you have some of those schemes you could send for, um, for review as well? I, I just, you know, quickly sketching this out at the 40 scale, um, and holding your parking line, i- it feels like you could flip the building as suggested, get a, just a bigger setback, not necessarily more area for landscaping, but a bigger setback, control the entrance of where the, the, um, you know, which side faces north, which side faces south, simply by the flow of traffic on the property, and it just feels like that relocated gas line doesn't impede in that essential flip of the building, but if you have some schematics, that'd be great to look at and, and see that. Just, you know, trying to make it, um, the best possible site design and, and that, um, you know, just taking a look at how you came to this conclusion of a north-south, um, building orientation.
Right, right, yeah. I, I mean, I think what it is, I think the building itself is 100 feet deep for the stacking of the trucks, or 80 feet deep, I forgot what it was now, um, but 104, I think was the overall dimension, right, Jim? Probably what it is.
105.
105, okay. So we had 105, plus we needed room for the trucks to turn in and then pull through and then pull back out. So I think we figured we needed at least 50 feet on each side, that's another 100 feet, that's 200 feet. I forget, what's our property width? I'm trying to solve the problem here online, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be doing this. I think it's like 103 feet. Okay, so I, I just, I think that we felt it was just too tight, but I can certainly send you something showing that, and then, you know, gives an explanation as to why we flipped it.
If that's okay with the commission, I, I'd like to look at that issue.
It's okay with me. Yeah, sure.
Okay.
All right, Brian, Mr. France, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Westbrooks. I appreciate that, though.
All right, uh, so we've got a motion to table on, on the floor. Uh, any other comments from the commission? All right, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, we appreciate, appreciate you spending the time, and, uh, hopefully we can get this worked out, um, and get you guys' approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westbrook.
Thank you all. All right. And then there was one, yes. So we're down to our last one. Um, we are at, uh, just about two hours. Does anybody need to take a five-minuter, or do we wanna just power through this?
Power through it. Go through it.
All right, all right. Suck it up and tough it out. All right, our last issue is, uh, IL Logistics, 895 Highland Road. Is there, uh, someone here representing this one?
Yes, sir, I'm all.
All right, um, let me find your plans here. Submit all. Dominion plans are like 100 pages long.
Yeah, to be honest, sir, there was nothing, uh, all fancy and, and gourmet like that. Uh, I was unaware of what to expect.
Everyone's still different. Dominion is making, doing considerably more work, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just sent basic pictures and things. Uh, I do apologize, I did have more information from Mr. Francis', uh, request, uh, but my owner failed to tell me that this was virtual, and I was actually sitting in the parking lot of, for the last hour up there. Uh, so I, I don't have the paperwork in front of y'all's face. Uh, what I do have is, uh, if I may share my screen-
Oh, please do.
Uh, I have a real quick drawing that I've come up with off of the overhead view, and hopefully, uh, we can talk through this. Are you guys able to see that?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so what we're proposing and hoping for here is, uh, we have the facility at 895 there on the left, uh, that we're looking to, uh, uh, sign a lease on. Uh, as you can see in the back is where I'm looking to park. Um, I've asked for the variance of 12 trucks. Right now, there's only nine. Uh, we've measured out from where you see the black lines to where we can park them trucks in that area against the back property of that abandoned warehouse or factory that's there, with very little exposure to the road from the Highland Road area. Uh, on the valley view side, uh, you would be able to see the tops of the trucks. It does go at a slight down, down climb there. Uh, it's 332 feet off the road. Uh, the yellow blocks that I have there, there is vegetation there, some trees and stuff planted. Uh, granted, I'm not gonna sit here and lie to you and tell you they're pretty trees, that's full and immaculate, but that is also the property of that factory, so I can't just go in there and, you know, dig up what I want. Um, if I, my line does cross somewhere there, I would have no problems placing, uh, you know, a few full pine trees or something that would block, uh, you know, if I could get, uh, permission from them to do so in that area. Uh, the only other spots that I've been able to look at to try to find any place for the landscaping that I was asked about, uh, was the little small devil strip area right, right in the middle of the entranceway there, uh, which would really do no, no blockage, uh, more of anything. Uh, I can't block their entrance and exit way out of either facility, uh, and we're 256 and a half feet uh, from the road, with most of the trucks being hidden behind the building, if not all, uh, being hidden. Uh, another thing I'd like for you, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to take in consideration is, uh, I have nine trucks now, even if I had 12, uh, they would be back behind the building. And I also have six dedicated routes now that all the trucks are gone, six of them's gone during the day, and it, it's looking like that's gonna move up to nine. So the trucks would only be there uh, at full capacity, maybe from six or seven at night, the five o'clock at the earliest, um, from the day routes to midnight before they go out to do their, their night routes. So we're talking limited times that all these trucks would be on the facility at one time. Uh, you might have four or five parked there at one time. Uh, I didn't have no landscape architect come out or anything, uh, basically because, you know, from Highland, it, it's probably 85 to 90% hidden, uh, if not more, from the building itself. Uh, the trucks that I'm asking to park. And from high, or valley view, with the trees and things that are there and the limited space with it going around that curve, someone's really gonna have to run off the road and break their neck to whip around to try to see my trucks that know where they're. Uh, so, I mean, I'm kinda on a crunch with, with some of this, because the, uh, uh, landowner is definitely wanting his, his lease signed and, uh, or he's gonna be looking for others. So, um, I'm at your mercy, hoping that we can get some kind of variance to, to put my, my trucks there.
All right, well, if you wanna leave that up there while we're, uh, discussing that, that's, that, that would probably help.
Not a problem.
Mr. France, do you wanna go over your, your comments, your thoughts?
Well, y- yeah, this, um, so my report stayed April 11th, and it sounds like the applicant definitely saw my, my comments. Um, apologize, you had to sit in the parking lot. Um, that's no fun, but, uh-
That was more our mistake than anybody else's, sir.
Yeah, it's still no fun.
No, sir.
But the, the code does require screening, and, and I agree, this, the site is, is difficult to screen. You know, when I originally looked at it, I thought, you know, could we get some additional screening on Highland? And, Mr. Westbrooks, I don't know if you have, um, Google Earth pulled up, but that's-
Yeah.
Probably our better way to look at this from, as viewed from Highland, and just kinda sneak around on the ground, taking a look at the vantage points. But I, I was sort of thinking, I wondered if, you know, some fencing, and it almost serves as like a security fencing, could be installed in the back that would provide some screening, but also, like I said, give the applicant some ability to screen that back parking area, but also secure it a little better. So it, it's hard to tell. I mean, I, I understand he, he didn't provide a, you know, and it's, it's tough to follow the Dominion guys, they have, they threw all the horses at it, but, um, you know, it's hard to tell without a scale drawing, really, and, and from some of the ground features, what can or can't be done, but I was thinking right there where your, you know, where the finger is, you've got a couple of nice mature trees, could you build up a, you know, it's the same property owner on both sides, could there be a, you know, a kidney-shaped landscape island built up there that, that provides a little more visual lea- relief as the eye looks to the, the north and, and west? Um, that was just sort of envisioning, I don't know what utilities are out there. It's, it's, again, it's tough to tell without having some level of plan, but then if you go into the back, just to the back of the building, where they're gonna park, I wondered if you could do some sort of a screening fence, serve this security fence as well there.
Something down here?
Yeah, mhm, yeah, 'cause they're parking, where that red truck is, they're parking to the, to the, um, east of that, correct?
Yes, on the, on the backside, uh, going to the back of the building, further back, yes.
Yeah, so the, behind those trees, kind of in the background, in the background of that red truck. I mean, is there a weird, a way to carry a screen fence that can also double as a security fence?
Well, right now, the other facility has a, um, some type of pod that sits there that blocks that, um, which was in the pictures that I took and I, I showed you guys, uh, uh, that I sent in with my proposal. Uh, there is a big pod that breaks that. The landowner is, is opposed to me putting fence up across the stuff, uh, basically because he has so many people in and out, the fence would have to be shut and everything else to be properly secured. Uh, and he don't, he don't want to, with the CrossFit place and all this stuff, you know, having 30 or 40 cars come in and out, uh, opening and shutting the fence, an inconvenience in them. And as you can see on that front picture you just pulled off of, sir, there's a big drain issue there to put a, to put, you know, mature trees or anything there. Uh, I could possibly cut the corner of that- to put a, to put, you know, mature trees or anything there. Uh, I could possibly cut the corner of that and put a nice mulch bed in and, and put some, uh, uh, nice ornamental grasses or something that would grow up higher, uh, or some burning bushes, something like that, you know, that would grow up. Uh, I'm sure I could talk him into that. But with that drainage being that close, you know, I wouldn't want any runoff of mulch or anything down into the city's, uh, drainage as well. Um, with the spot that we picked for the trucks, you know, I thought for somebody to drive by and actually see that truck that would affect them, they're, they're gonna have to rubberneck pretty hard. I mean, 35 mile an hour down Highland Road and, and, and paying attention. Um, you know, you're not gonna see the trucks that, that bad back there, especially when there's only, you know, four or five at a time, uh, you know, and at nighttime, uh, when, from the five or six hours, there might be all nine or 10 there. Um, it's gonna be a point that it's dark at night and nobody's gonna see that anyway.
So, so, and I, I agree with most, most of that. I, I'd say though, so a couple of things. The, the mayor, um, has gone to great lengths to try to improve these older industrial areas and, and every chance that the planning commission can carry out that objective, they do that. And this is a great opportunity. Mr. Westbrook, could you go back to that, the second one you just had up?
The, the pictures?
Yeah, those pictures.
Yeah.
So I, I think, so in that picture right there, I agree, the drains certainly, you don't want to go and peed that drain, but there looks to be, and again, scale is everything. But, you know, if those are, if that sidewalk is four feet wide, um, using that from a scale standpoint, we should have plenty of room to do something where you see that no-through traffic sign, you could take arborvitae and skyrocket junipers, whatever, from like, you know, eight to 10 feet in front of that sign and line those down in a north-south fashion and follow the, the grass line and then do the same as you come up to the first set of, um, the first sidewalk block that you see there. And you'd get a, you'd get a vegetative screen there that I think would be helpful. And then you could do some burning bushes in front of that. I think anything just to improve the appearance. And then if you go back to the, the first picture that you provided, view from Highland Road, truck park behind building with minimal exposure, and the gentleman there taking some pictures, there, clearly you could see there's the telephone pole or the electrical pole, and then there's, there's a small landscape strip, there's two of them, and, you know, where the sidewalk runs through the middle of it. Something could be done there, too. You know, burning bushes and other type of hardy, salt-tolerant species can be installed in that. I think those things would be pretty solid from Highland Road to enhance that area.
Well, I mean, for the fact that you want me to just put something in for eyesight and prettiness, uh, you know, I can do that. That's not gonna affect the fact that you still see the tops of the trucks. But I'm more than willing to put some shrubs into, to better the community. Uh, have no problem with that. Um, he just isn't gonna let me do like a full fence or something like you was addressing earlier. I, I don't mind a bit, uh, to speak with him, which I think he's kind of already told me to do whatever I wanted with the, uh, if there was a way to do the landscaping up front. If you would like to see some taller shrubs or arborvitae's, whatever, you know, in that, as long as that machine, can you put the, uh, little man right on the Highland Road area there facing the right building, sir?
Yeah.
To see if we have room with the mature trees sitting there? Now go up just a little towards them trucks.
Uh, to the...
Yeah, so right there where that sign is, I mean, we could put some spirals or something right there. Uh, possibly, you know, three or four, uh, going towards the building. Uh, you know, we just can't get nothing that branches out a lot because it's gonna be tree into tree and that's gonna be more of an eyesore than it would be to, uh, you know, not have it. But I'm not opposed to putting, you know, shrubs there and in that little devil strip area, uh, to the left side there at all to help beautify the community. Um, you know, it's, uh, this is kind of a dream, uh, position for where I wanted this, uh, this company to be. And it's 1.8 miles from where I need to be with my clients, so I'm more than willing to help out.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yes.
So that, can we go back to the, it sounds like the property owner isn't really, really willing to clean up his property. Um, that, uh, that pod that you said that's not yours and you don't necessarily need it there, whose pod is that?
Uh, from the looks, I think it may be the CrossFit facilities, uh, for where they store their, uh, material. Uh, it's directly behind their building.
So this property, just so the commission understands, this property is owned limited industrially. So the whole outdoor storage issue really isn't an issue that's supposed to be at, 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 at issue, excuse my continuing to use the same word. You're not really supposed to add this outdoor storage. It's in the general industrial dish, not the limited industrial dish. So I don't know what, what's happening there on that property, but we're, you know, I appreciate the gentleman wanting to add some landscaping and that's what we need to add to screen as much, as much as we can. But it sounds like the property owner needs to clean up the site a little bit, too. It's a highly visible location in Macedonia and we've been doing a lot of positive things on Highland that, um, we should continue to try to, to do.
And I can respect it, sir. And as I, as I said, I, I have no problems with, uh, you know, addressing the issue of planting some stuff and making the, uh, uh, beautification better. Uh, you know, as far as the, the trucks, the trucks are gonna be the trucks. Like I said, they're, they're 26-foot box trucks. You're gonna see the tops of a couple of them and, uh, things like that from Valley View. But, uh, you know, it's, it's also gonna be, uh, limited because of the number that I have running 24 hours a day. So with five to six, uh, looking at a couple more routes being dedicated during the, during the day, excuse me, uh, you're talking maybe, you know, if I've got nine trucks now and I'm running six, I've got three sitting for the daytime. And then I normally have seven to eight running at nighttime. So there's possibly gonna be one or two there at nighttime. Uh, so we're limited, the amount of trucks that are gonna be there. And, uh, that's, that's the beauty of the business. I, I like to keep them rolling, so, so we're, we're not parked and making money, so. But I, I have no problems with your suggestions on the devil strip and, and doing the, uh, flower bed or something along the parking way there. Uh, the only thing he was, uh, concerned about with some of my suggestions was, um, causing issues with the snow plowing. I do not feel that that would cause issues. Uh, they push the snow straight back, uh, not towards the road, so that should not be an issue. Uh, so that was the only thing that he threw at me that he said I could not do was obstruct the plowing and stuff. Uh, so if we put a flower, or, you know, some, uh, burning bushes in that center section by the, uh, electric pole, you know, probably three or four or something like that, so it'd grow together and make a nice hedge at some point. And then we do, like you suggested, some of the taller, uh, ornamentals or something in that bed there and throw a little mulch around it, cut the grass out, throw some mulch around it. You know, we, we could, we could beautify it for you. I was a landscaper for 20 years also, so I know how to do it all.
Keep in mind the electrical lines above. And that devil strip especially.
Yes, the devil strip, uh, I would, I would only suggest burning bush-type material so you can control the height of it.
Yep.
Uh, being that close to the road, you really don't want to let it get carried away anyway. Uh, like Mr. Francis suggesting, that's mainly for looks. Uh, that's mainly just to, to show that you got a little something better sitting there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I add a little history to this?
Sure.
Uh, both of those buildings are multiple tenant buildings and the building on the left, uh, they take their deliveries in the rear of the building. You know, typically the sidewalk is just, uh, the main entrance. And the rumor that's on the street that both of these buildings were Geis buildings, but they're sold. So it's, the information I got on the street that Geis does not own these two buildings now.
Hmm.
And, and of course, being they're all multiple tenant building and chopped up, neither one of these buildings have no fire protection in them and no fire alarms. So.
Hmm.
Once we get through this process, uh, we will have to do an occupancy inspection for the units that, you know, they look, looking to choose to, to be in. And that Pella window container that was to the building to the left.
Okay.
That was, uh, some kind of a construction company. And I, just from observation, CrossFit had, uh, a session going. They pretty much fill that parking lot between the two buildings. And that's all being paved there from the, from the Highland roadside. That's pretty much built with all of the, uh, people at CrossFit.
Okay. That's interesting.
Yeah, and as, as far as the fire inspection, I'm not sure. I know they're remodeling a lot of the area in the left building now. Uh, remodeling all the area that I'm looking to lease. Uh, so it may be updated by then. Uh, as far as fire extinguishers and all that, I'll be putting in myself because we have general uh, rules and laws that we have to abide by with DOT and things. So, uh, we'll make sure first aid kits and all that's provided and fire, fire protection. So, uh, on top of that, I don't know about the building. Uh, I'm new to that.
Well, if they're moving walls, they should submit plan or to the building department for construction.
Uh, as far as I know, I, that, when I looked at the property first, the back half was already opened up. I don't know if any walls moved or not. Uh, what they're doing, that, I know that there was a wall added to separate the warehouse, uh, from the office space. Uh, that was probably a little four-foot wall, but...
It's not a fire-rated wall?
I'm not, I'm not sure, sir. That was something that I just seen as I was looking at the building to lease. I'm just trying to keep it real with everybody.
Well, just to try to give you some insight, there's no major issues once you think everything's in place and you're ready to move in.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure, uh, this gentleman that I spoke with, uh, he's got a guy named Joe Perrell that does his, uh, leasing and stuff. And, uh, the, the owner come out to meet us and I'm sorry, I don't have his information with me. Um, he was very much determined to make sure everything was up to code. So he was setting it straight while I was there with him. Uh, so I'm sure anything that you go in and, and we find, he will, he will fix. Uh, I don't know how long he's owned it or anything like that, uh, but, uh, he seems to be the type that, that will get on top of it.
Someone's horse is taking off. All right, um, did we have any other, any other comments, uh, Mr. Rodeck or? Not sure if Joe's still on July, I think so. Any other, any other staff comments?
Uh, I, I have no comments.
All right. Um, I guess, uh, Mr. Francis, if you think, um, you know, if, if he does, could, I mean, and it could probably even be an administrative review without having to have, uh, it come back to the planning commission if we're only talking about some landscaping here along Highland. Um, I guess that, that, that's pretty much the only issue. I think we're kind of thinking, at least when I was at least looking at, uh, the Valley View roadside, I don't know that there's a whole lot you can do without restricting the maneuver, the movements around the back of the building. I mean, if you could put, like you kind of suggested, some kind of fence or something here, but I think you're no longer gonna get trucks around. And it's just, I, I just know that you can maneuver with putting too much in there and besides that, this is pretty much a, a, a long driveway. I don't know if we're gonna get anything. So I'm thinking the stuff that you were talking about up front, um, is maybe about the best we're gonna do um, for this facility. Um, if you agree.
Um, yeah, I think that given the circumstances, it's, um, yeah, probably the, the best thing can be accomplished right now. And then, uh, you know, it'd be, it'd be good to see just exactly what's going on in the building. It sounds like maybe there's some other issues just to the inside that need to be addressed administratively. But the, the landscaping, I think we can, we can look at that and get that approved pretty quickly. Um, just would, just ask that it's on a, a scaled site plan. Doesn't need to be a professional engineer or, or an architect that draws it up, just, but to scale, just so we know exactly what we're dealing with in terms of the distances on the property.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I think we should have the, um, the applicant provide a written authorization from the owner uh, on his application for the occupancy permit. He has, the owner name is Igor, um, let's just, who I guess may be Mr. Tap, Tapscott's, um, uh, maybe supervisor or owner of his company. But we have no authorization from the actual, uh, owner of the property that they're okay with what's going on here. And I think that we should have that written author, authorization on file.
Okay.
And I will, and just for the record, I'll have our zoning inspector out there tomorrow on the pod and any, and any of the, uh, construction inside the building. I'm kind of alarmed to hear that. That's all I have.
Okay, so I, I think, yeah, any motion we make could, could include, uh, you know, written authorization to the property owner. Things acceptable as part of the administrative review, if everybody's okay with that. Yes. Okay.
I can have you gentlemen, uh, ladies and gentlemen, a, a email as quick as tomorrow morning from the owner of our company stating that I have full authorization to, to do anything here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it would actually be the, uh, owner of the property, not the owner of the company. The owner of the property, who looks like it's a, that, the Steel Properties out of Lakewood, Ohio. So that would be, that's who we'd be looking for.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant owner of my company. I apologize.
That's okay.
Uh, yes, I, I can get with him and I'll, you know, because if we go through, I've gotta get with him on the lease and all. Um, I can have him sign off that, that this is fine.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Kevin, can we approve this, uh, having all this subject to administrative approval? In other words, instead of sending stuff to the board here, how about, uh, the approval from the, from the owner of the property and, uh, well, the, of a landscape plan, uh, let this all be done administratively, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be dealing with it, uh, hopefully again?
Yes, I, I, I think, I think that would be acceptable. Do you wanna make that motion? Or you want me to, or?
Hey, go ahead, make it, you, you want...
All right, uh. I'll make it back. All right, so, Mr. Francis, is this, uh, is this a site plan approval? Is that what we're, we're, we're looking for here?
Um. Uh, eh. I guess it's, it's, uh, well, I'm not sure. It's, it's a screen, probably it's a screening, screening plan approval. I don't want to call it a site plan because really, I have a site plan and I don't think he needs a full-blown engineered plan, but maybe just to, you know, provide screening plan approval, subject to administrative review. And then I agree, the owner signed off on this and the owner of the, the property should sign off on this application.
All right, and then I'll make a motion for a screening plan approval, subject to administrative review as well as, uh, written authorization from the property owner that, uh, the screening plan is, is, uh, allowed. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, uh, Susan, you want to do a roll call?
Sure, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Valada's here.
All right, uh, Mr. Tapscott, sorry you had to come sit in the parking lot, but at least it gave you something to do. We drug up the meeting as long as we could so that you could get back to the office.
Yes, sir. Uh, so, so I got this right, this is approved upon me following too with these two options, correct?
Correct.
So, so as long as he signs off and I get the specs for you for the landscaping, I can, I'm authorized to go ahead and sign the lease and, and make moves.
Yeah, I'd make sure you get the, you know, get, get the final approval from the state. Make sure, you know, don't just turn it in, but make sure that they take a look at it and, uh, give you, give you the okay.
Okay, and Mr. Francis, I'll take you up on your suggestions on the landscaping part there. Uh, any certain type of shrubs you would like to see other than burning bushes in the middle?
I, I think that and some, um, some other species that provide... I, I think that and some, some other species that provide some vertical relief would be helpful. So you, you, you said you did, you did this a long time. You come up with a nice little, little plan again, just to a engineer scale, one inch equals ten feet, twenty feet, something like that. And the different species, the quantities, and we'll make it an official screening plan that we can have for the record. Mr. Rodeck can include with the, the property file, I think is what, what I'd be looking for.
Okay, I'm just gonna hire a company to come do it. That way I know they're doing it to, to the specs that's required to businesses out there now, since I've been out of business for so long. So I'll hire somebody. That way I know it's up to your guys' approval. Any companies that you have in mind in the local area?
Well.
No, we, we, the city can't really recommend any. So
There you go.
Any, any landscaping company would be able to help you out and give you a good little plan, and I'm sure it'll pull together quickly.
Okay, not a problem. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank, thank you.
All right, y'all have a good night.
You too. I think that's our last item. I think Mr. Francis predicted three hours. I was hoping for two or two and a half, so.
Well, technically, technically, you, you did start the meeting at about five, five fifteen. So Yeah, we're
Two minutes or an hour and two and a half, two hours thirty-one minutes or something.
With the public hearings, you're closer to three. See how that?
Okay, okay, okay. I'd just say we hang out a little bit longer. We can start next month meeting.
I, I have to laugh. Su- Susan called me and she said, this, this packet's big. Like, it's you, you want me to mail it or you want to come pick it up? You're right. Hey, Susan, if you, if you find anything, I'm really perplexed on that, that master unit comments thing because I, I'll feel, I'll feel kind of pretty that I didn't note the, I don't, I looked through my files and I didn't see anything on.
Yeah, I have a feeling that's something that was sent in and Nino approved, but I'm not positive on that. I will go through the folder and try to find that plan that was approved and paid for.
Well, tomorrow, I'll, I'll email you the little document I was reading. So I'll email it to Brian and, and to Kevin. His name's on there. Kevin's name is on there. So I'm, I'll email it around so you can see what I was talking about. I got it from the city.
Yeah, great. I appreciate. And then, hey, Susan, just real quick, on the last vote, did they, did you take a roll call on that last vote?
No. Did I?
Oh, I don't think we did. I don't think we did.
Really?
Did we? I think we discussed.
You, you're not closed officially, so you could
Let's make sure. Let's do a quick roll call just in case.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Valada's absent.
Okay.
And if I keep talking, Mr. Westbrook, we're gonna be at three, so you better shut me up.
All right, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. See you guys next month. Hey, real quick, is there any discussion of anytime coming? I think you might have mentioned to me, Susan, maybe sometime down the road, there's daylight that we may actually meet.
Oh, I, I don't know. I'm not sure. I think they might be ramping up for it, but I'm not sure of that.
Okay. Now maybe before the end of the summer or something.
Or at least till July first.
There you go.
The mystery man has
There he is.
Hiding out.
I've been here the whole time.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Have a good evening.
Bye, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.
Yeah, good night, everybody.
Bye.
And we are out.